Good morning, Councilor O'Brien.
Thank you.
And members of the council, Oliver Jaco, Community Planning. I will be presenting the first part of the work session and then I will turn it over to Rob Klug. And either he will be presenting or Matt Herman. And we are here to answer questions that the council may have. Councilors, every year or the beginning of every year, we come to the council to review our following year proposed work program. And this is the work session that we are having today for council to review our proposed 2022 work program. And it encompasses community planning and also transportation plan in public works. Next slide. So for agenda this morning, councilors, I will focus on community planning, what proposed work program, starting with administration, land use, and then followed by transportation. We also provided the council a seven-page document, which the council will review. That document is organized by description of each program or proposed work item, land use projects, and monitoring and implementation of the general plan. That document is also organized by whether the project is mandated. When I say mandated, I mean RCWU or County Code. And whether the function is a core function for community planning or transportation planning. And then whether the project is also ongoing. So that's how the seven-page document is organized. And I will encourage the council to take a look at it if you haven't already, because that is the document that the council will be approving. And the goal of this work session is to review the proposed work program and then ask for your approval. If not today, maybe at a council time after your review. And hopefully we'll get approval by the council. If there are any additional projects or items that the council would like us to work on, the council has the discretion to add those on. Next slide, please. So I will start briefly with administration. And in our administration function, this is mainly where we focus on the department budget and financial management. Making sure that we are managing the budget approved for us to do all our work. Making sure we are staying within the budget. In administration, we provide leadership and internal support to all the staff. And both internal and external. On the administration, one of the major areas that has been a challenge for us, but we are doing the best we can. It's not unique to community planning is also the case for other departments. That is public record disclosure and record management. We received tons of public record requests and it's taken my time and my OA and Sonia's time, I'm not going to mention everyone. And then support to commissions that we are responsible for. And then support to ongoing projects and programs. Next slide. In terms of land use, I mentioned ongoing programs. The council is aware that community planning is in charge of our staff to the planning commission, which is required under RCWU 35.63. We are also staff and responsible for the Historical Preservation Commission, the aging on the Commission on Aging, the School Advisory Council. We, when I say we, the county and the cities also engage in coordination and collaboration in land use planning. And we have engaged or have the tribe, the Carlos tribe, to participate in that coordination. We also are responsible for shoreline master program monitoring. And of course, the Buildable Lands program never ends when we provide the report. We are constantly monitoring, seeing what is happening as the area develops. Next slide. And speaking of the, yeah, the proposed work program, speaking of the Buildable Lands report. That report is complete. We're just going through the review stage. And we have scheduled a hearing before the council in February. So the council will be seeing, will be holding a hearing on that report. We have a placeholder here for any additional work that may be needed in 2022. I mentioned that because the last time we completed the report in 2016, I believe, there were issues raised about the completeness, if you will, of that report. But that focused mainly on the cities of Barrow, Ground, La Centre and Richfield. Were asked to provide additional analysis and we worked with those cities. And the main issue there was to address what the law calls reasonable measures as it relates to density. So I don't know what will happen, but I'm just having a placeholder in case we were asked to do any additional work. Next slide, please. The same is true for the Columbia River.
Oliver, may I ask a question about the Buildable Lands model? The hearing or whatever it is in February, that's, is that an on-time review? I mean, it can wait until February?
Yes, it can, councillor. And the reason for that is because we asked for an extension from the state and they granted us that. And if I may indulge, I will be out in December. So I just want to make sure that I am here when that hearing occurs. If the council wants the hearing sooner than that, we can schedule that. I know my staff will be able to do so, but that's the timing. I just want to, I want to be here for the hearing. If that answers your question, but we asked for an extension and it was granted.
Okay, you asked for an extension from the Department of Commerce?
Yes.
And the reason for the extension was?
We couldn't, you know, we were taking time. If the council recall, we were doing it as the council requested additional runs, more work engaging the building coalition to resolve certain issues. And that took us some time. So we asked, knowing that we asked for an extension and which was granted. So we still have time to get that done and meet our timeline.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Knew that you did have extra work to do, I just thought that was completed.
It was completed and, but we wasn't going to complete that by June. Remember, the council had a hearing June 29th. The report was supposed to be, if we were to meet that deadline, June 30th. So we asked for, knowing that we asked for an extension.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
Piggybacking on that, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have a quick question. I was wondering why, given that the report that we received previously was a draft report, that here on your prior slide, it's labeled as report is complete?
Yes, we had a draft. And to me, I think that is complete. When I say complete, we are no longer doing any extra work. We will take all the comments. So far, we received only one comment from the city of Vancouver. There's also, I believe, a comment from the building coalition. So all those comments will come back to the council. Our staff is reviewing that, seeing what additional changes or edit can be made to the report. So we will come to the council with that. And prior to your hearing, we will send what we will call a final report out for the council to review. That's what the council will be having the hearing on. There is no additional VBLM run. Bob is not doing any additional run. None of that is occurring. This is just the review time and completing the report to make it final. That's where we are.
So the draft is complete and the final report will be forthcoming?
Yes.
Okay, maybe that would help in our understanding of what report is complete means.
Sure. We are not rewriting it. We are just taking those comments, editing it, and then we will bring it back. Bob is not running any model, all that have been completed, that's what I mean. I hope that answers your question.
It does. I'm not sure that the report is actually complete, if there's going to be editing going on. So I was just suggesting that that be reflected in the slide or our discussion of it.
Well noted. We are taking those comments in. They may not be, if I may councillor, they may not be any in-depth editing. For example, the city of Vancouver, for their own report, have asked that that be attached as an addendum. Those are some of the information will come to the council to see whether you agree with the city asking us to add that as an addendum. Because we have not, we've given the cities extra time to provide us comment. No other city have provided us comment. Karma said they don't have any comment. So if upon reviewing the draft, there is, you know, crossing Ts and Is, we will do that. But in terms of major work on the Buildable Lands report, that has been completed, given the direction from council.
Okay, I still think councillor Bowerman's point is valid. It's in a draft form apparently, because we haven't had our hearing, so.
That's true, it's in draft form. And we will make, if there is any changes, we'll make that and bring it to a hearing and get that off our chest. Next slide, please. The Columbia River Gorge project, again, I will put it in the category of completed. We have a draft code. We had a work session with you. We had a hearing with the planning commission. They've made their recommendation to you. What we will do now is bring that to a hearing before the council. And I think the hearing for that is December 7th. The reason I have it here is that I'm having it as a placeholder for any additional work that may occur. Don't know what the gorge commission is going to rule. And I don't know, the code will not become effective until the Secretary of Agriculture and Forests review is completed and tell us that our code is consistent with the gorge scenic area act. So that's why I'm having it on as a placeholder for 2022, should we be asked to do any additional work. But the hearing for the council is December 7th. Next slide, please.
Can we pause on that, Madam Chair?
Sure, go back to slide four.
So at the work session we had, I was trying to highlight and I just get a double tap on it because I'm not sure it was fully understood. You know, we had an overview of the history of this code. We had an overview of the many, many changes that were being proposed. And then we had an overview of the dire consequences, should we not change our code. What I was trying to highlight last time is we had no analysis of our own planning commission's work because they objected to many of these changes. And other counties, both north and south of the river, have specific objections to some of these changes. We had no analysis. I tried to focus on that. Basically, what I heard was substantively, the planning commission could do it because they did without any analysis of whether they, you know, what the pros and cons were of their substantive positions and also the objections of other counties. We heard no analysis essentially of what these code changes were going to do. So that was a very much a gap in my mind of what I would have liked to have seen presented at the work session. And to this day, I still really haven't heard that gap filled.
Chair, this is Kathleen, if I may. And I don't know if Chris Cook is on today as well, but from my understanding, during that planning commission meeting, which I know I believe I forwarded to all the councils so you guys could see yourself that the planning commission did not provide any reason for their votes, other than just saying yes or no. So there was no analysis done during their vote. And Oliver or Chris can correct me if I'm mistaken, but that is based on what they decided in their conversation, which was very limited.
Kathleen, a quick question on that. We have received in the past the written transcript of those planning commission meetings prior to our hearings. Is that available now? I know we all got the link to the hearing that we could have watched to see and hear the analysis or lack of analysis on the planning commission's decision. But we've also historically been given that the written transcript of those planning commission meetings, is that available as well?
Yes, I will be, I will be checking with staff on the minutes of the hearing. And that will be transmitted to the council. I believe we have sent two documents upstairs yesterday for the hearing, which will include the planning commission minutes. And as you stated, Kathleen, there were no really deliberation as to why they were voting the way that they voted. But to answer your question, councillor Olson, yes, we will be providing the minutes of the transcript, the version transcript of the minutes of the PC, so that the council will be previewed to that. Councillor Medvigia, I agree with you. I thought that I did provide or try to provide or fill in the gap when there was none. There was no deliberation from the PC as to why they voted the way they voted. I think their objection, not putting word into their mouth, is that they didn't like the fact that the gorge is dictating for us what to do. And I think that's really the basis of their vote. And I don't know if Chris Cook is on the line, she may chime in as well.
Yeah, so we're still ignoring the substance of what's behind this. Yeah, we could all sit down and read, parse through the transcript. But what about the other lawyers from other counties? The other councillors, commissioners from other counties? The objections that were raised by the other counties. Hearings ago, we asked what was the status of where the other counties saw or viewed these code changes? And essentially, at that point, that was glossed over as well. So that gap still remains. There's, I don't see the staff work on what is the substance behind these changes? What are the objections by other counties? Our own planning commission? Perhaps they didn't document very publicly or in a transparent way what their rationale was. But we still have staff capacity. We don't have that capacity on the council. It resides in the executive branch. So I'm just looking for some additional homework, substantive homework on what, you know, those changes that are being objected to by other counties. What are the pros and cons? Should we be joining in? Should we be ignoring it? I know we have a very limited role with, just by the number of limited acreage we have within the gorge. We're not nearly as impacted as some of the other counties. I understand that. And I think I have a good appreciation of what the dire consequences are. Should we object or ignore these code changes? But I'd just like to know a little bit more substantively, with your staff's help, what the objections are, what the pros and cons are of these proposed changes.
And before you speak, Oliver, I just want to inform the council. You probably got the information as well about how they came up with the $80,000 requirement for farming, for the income. Basically, the answer to that is one commissioner, one commissioner said that it should be $80,000. That is ridiculous. It is not, it does not substantiate a hundred percent change in the requirement for the income of a farmer in the gorge. So I would ask too, Oliver, that your staff find out from the other counties, the other planning commissions or commissioners, what was the substance of their reasons for not accepting this? Or for at least what their discussion was about if they did accept it or if they did not accept it, how it was they came to that decision? Because these are major changes. The fact that they haven't changed for many years is their problem, not ours. Just because it hasn't changed for a whole lot of years and then they double the amount of income that needs to be made by a farmer is not reason enough. At least for me. I just think they need to make it more substantive in the reasons.
Counsel, if I may just jump in for a moment, I just wanted to let you know that Chris Cook is on the line. However, she's having issues with her audio. So she's trying to jump in. But it's my understanding that many of the counties and county councils have adopted the changes pursuant to the gorge. So, but if she can jump in, I'll let her speak. But I just want to let you know she is here, just having issues with the audio.
Okay, so if she does jump on, I'd like to know how many counties are involved in this in the first place? When you say many, I'd like to, I'd like to know how many and how many counties are directly affected, both north and south of the river.
Madam Chair, I actually think we got all this information during the work session. Which counties agreed and didn't agree and which ones chose to adopt their own ordinances?
Which ones are they? Can you tell me, councillor Olson?
Wasco was one and Clickitat has the other one that the gorge commission, they've never, if I remember correctly, never really done their own. So the gorge commission does theirs. But I remember Wasco County. I don't have the work session in front of me, obviously, but I'm just trying to dig it out of my memory banks. But I also just want to make sure that we stay on task here. This is Oliver's work plan and this is just part of this work plan that he's trying to present to us this morning. So.
Councillor Olson.
Get caught up in this, but.
We are wholly aware that this is the work plan. And we're interrupting it and asking questions during the work plan because this is his work plan and we need to approve it. So we have questions about it, Ms Olson. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Point of order, point of order, Chair.
If you would like, just a minute. If you would like to provide the counties via whatever you learned at the work session, I'd be happy to have you name them, but.
Well, I'll go ahead and look it up while you guys are arguing about this topic that's a waste of time.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Point of order, Chair.
Counselor Lance.
This is a work session about the work plan and the details of the specific ordinance related to the Columbia River Gorge is not specifically a part of the work plan. If we need to have a separate work session about this gorge area ordinance, then I suggest we do so. But if we could stay on track so that we finish talking about the plan, that would be fantastic.
Thank you, councillor Lance. As I stated, the councillor also session on the work plan. And we have questions about this work plan, about the Columbia Gorge scenic area hearing that is coming up. So it's totally appropriate.
Point of order, Chair.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, so I'm making a question for a point of order and you're denying it?
I am denying it.
Noted. Thank you for your respectful conduct of this meeting and all the meetings. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Oliver, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, councillors. The only thing I will add is that all the questions that you are asking will be provided to the council at the hearing. This question was asked about, there are about six counties that are in the gorge. And almost all, if not all, I believe, have already approved the code as part of the update. Councillor Olson has corrected that Clidicat County, for example, the gorge commission writes their code for them. So they have no choice. Wasco, I believe, was objecting to one particular item. And I don't know that right now, but what the gorge commission have done in the past is if you object to any of the changes to implement the scenic area act, you have to adopt a code within your own jurisdiction that you're not going to be, I think it was more on, I believe in Wasco County, it is overnight there and they didn't want to participate in issuing or reviewing that, was my understanding. So the gorge commission said, okay, you have to exclude that in your own code. Now, what we were trying to present to the council was a response to questions that the councillors asked us at the work session. What will happen, for example, if the county decide not to adopt any of these changes? We responded by, here are some of the consequences of that. Not that we're throwing the books at our council, no. If we, the county council, decide we're not going to go along with the $80,000 income threshold, we have to write our code in such a way that we, the county, will not be issuing permit on that particular issue. Similarly, on the wetland, the count, it's up to the council. When we come up for your hearing, you can tell us what any of the portion that you don't want to adopt. And we will send that to the gorge commission. If they object, they will send it back to us until such a time that they agree that our code is consistent with the scenic area management plan. But up to date, I know that majority of the six counties have gone through their planning commission and some of them have adopted those changes. I didn't hear about any objections, but we will research that and come back. Be prepared at your December 7th hearing.
Madam Chair, can I just very briefly respond to? Oliver, first of all, thank you. I appreciate your responsiveness to these questions that we're raising on your slide number six. These are all relevant questions that need some responsiveness. It would be great to have an executive summary from your staff on what those transcripts show or don't show from the planning commission. This work and discussion also has another point for the public. We need to have these discussions in public so the public knows. Because we are getting emails objecting to some of this code. And the public demands some transparency in the work that's being done by our county on these issues. So this discussion is highly relevant and responsive to your briefing today. And I appreciate you continuing the responsiveness. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, councillors. If I may, we will be prepared and we are getting all those comments as well. And we will do our best to respond. I know your hearing on the 7th, we will also, the gorge staff is not going to be speaking for county staff, but they will be there to hopefully, in their own presentation, not answering questions, but in their own comment, maybe address some of these issues. So we'll see what happens on the December 7th. I hope Chris Cook will be able to join us because she had been in communication with the attorneys representing the gorge. And we have reached out to other staff from the six cities, the six counties that are in the gorge. And we are in constant communication with them as to the status of their own process. And that's why I was mentioning that almost all of them, maybe it was Motinoma County and I cannot be certain that their hearing is coming up in December 2nd, I believe. But the other counties have already completed the adoption process. So we will be prepared as we come to you, maybe before December 7th, if we can send any. If we can send any information that come our way to Counselors, we will do that. But we will be prepared to answer your question. The only thing I will say for the planning commission is that you will agree, Counselors, that it will be hard, a challenge for me to figure out what is in their mind when they didn't say a lot. So I, I understand will have a challenge, you know, coming up as to why they voted, the way they voted. The only my understanding was they objected to the gorge commission telling them what to do and knowing that it is, the, the council has the final say that they're only making a recommendation. And that's my understanding of why they voted, the way they voted. But if I can continue on, at the end of the day, our code would be found consistent with the scenic area act, not by me. But depending on how the council vote, we will forward that on to the gorge commission. But our code will not be found consistent or in, they will, that decision is yet to be made by the gorge commission and the Secretary of Agriculture before any of our code can become effective. So I will move on to the next slide, please. This is one of those projects that we also continue to work on. It never ends. This is what is called the Clark County Coordinated Water System Plan. We updated this plan last year and this plan addresses water service to meet the land use plan or the growth that we plan for. So in 2022, we will continue to coordinate with the, with the, with the committee that works on this. And the committee really comprised of all the public works director in Clark County from Waschigo to La Sente, all the public works, those are the members of the committee. And occasionally we will get an inquiry to review any proposed water service adjustment. And it is my responsibility and staff to review that and make sure that it's still consistent with the, with the general plan. So that's why this is an ongoing project. So next slide. The Housing Option Study and Action Plan, we are working really hard on the project and believe we will be concluded in 2022. What I suspect will happen is that the project will come with a recommendation from the group to the council. And depending on what the council approve, I believe that the council will give us direction to work on what I may call a low hanging fruit, which may be code work. And then there may be additional projects or strategies that may be long term. But if there are any short term work, for example, amending our code, that is something we will work on to implement the recommendation that the council finally adopts in 2022. Next slide. Annual reviews, the council is familiar with the annual reviews and dockets. These are properly owner initiated requests to amend the comprehensive plan and zoning designation. And again, this is required by, by the RCW cited and also our code. Every year we anticipate receiving four to five requests and I believe that will be the case in 2022. The applicant has up until, well, we are beginning to schedule a pre-application conference now and that staff is doing applicant has until January 1 to submit for an application to move forward. So that's really the process. The only thing I have here on bullet number three is I don't know, and I use the word, I don't know when the next periodic plan update will begin. But every time we are in the process of updating the plan, we come to the council and made a request through a resolution to suspend annual reviews until the completion of the periodic plan update. If that's the case, we will make that request in 2022, assuming we're going to start on update in 2022. I will come back to this question later on in the, in the presentation. Next slide, please. There are Title 40 amendments and what I will say here is there are the first three bullets. Essential public facilities, this is carried over from 2021. Why? We are waiting a module ordinance for behavioral health from the Department of Commerce that will help guide us in amending our code to address citing of essential public facilities. This may be an airport, it may be a jail, but we don't have any ordinance addressing the process for doing so. Some of you may be familiar with the behavioral health facility that are being located in, in, I believe in Salmon Creek area. But our code is silence or what is the process for citing of essential public facilities? As soon as we receive the module ordinance from the commerce, we will work on this and come back to the council for your approval. Last year, the council approved update to the critical area ordinance and we wanted that to be completed before we start the periodic plan update is, is, this is work done by community development. And the council with approval of their budget to do this work, ask community planning to assist ComDev to get this work done. The sec, the third item here, bullet here is the flood insurance map, which is very helpful for the real estate industry and those that it may impact. It may typically, when we update this, it changes their insurance, flood insurance rate. So again, we are waiting update from FEMA. They are very slow, but everyone, the COVID is impacting everyone. So as soon as we get an update from FEMA, we will update our flood insurance map to areas that impact Clark County. The last four bullets here, groundwater, this is continuing any assistance to the clean water, groundwater update. Public health is asking us to assist them to update the sewer connection requirement. This is going to be part of Title 40. And of course, with the update to the critical area ordinance and FEMA, we are going to also be looking at the, our shoreline master program and make any adjustment to be consistent with any update to the critical area ordinance or the FEMA. And finally, because our planning commission work is legislative and often rely on issues that are growth management related, we want to make sure that we are consistent following the, following the required revised code of Washington to make sure that matters that goes to the planning commission are those that are consistent with the growth management. So there's going to be a minor code change to make that very clear without creating any confusion. Next slide. The schools, the council will recall that you asked, the school district, the sixth school district here did ask for an extension, which the council granted. So we are going to be, we anticipating that they will be submitting their capital facilities update and the associated impact fees. These are the school districts that we are expecting to update in 2022. Ridgefield, Vancouver, Thomas, Waschigo, Green Mountain and Barrow Grum. Next slide. This particular document is one that is also required by by state and also often rely by all state auditors when they come in to audit the county and so forth. So this is called the capital facilities financial plan. This is where we put in our six year CFP. The current plan covers the period 2016 to 2021. So the next update will be 2022 to 2027. And it will cover these four areas, transportation, parks and open space, groundwater drainage and water quality, and then county buildings and other facilities. Those are the four major areas that we have to identify projects in order for it to be funded and to be worked on so that anytime we are audited, we, we, we show that the project is in our six year capital facilities plan and that's why it is being funded. Next slides. And this effort will require coordination. Go back to the, to the slide on the capital facilities plan, if you may. That will require, I won't dwell on that, but that will require, is not something that my department will do alone, but we will shepherd that effort. It will require coordination with about three or four departments to get that work done. This is, this item is something that the cities have requested and I'm just bringing it up to the council. Is required, there's a section in RCW that requires that there be what I may call a guideline for amending countywide planning policies. Countywide planning policies are those policies that the county and all the seven cities, including the city of Woodland, agreed to. So, but what we don't have is a guideline or a procedure for amending it. So it's not something that the county can unilaterally amend or any city. So this project will be providing, coming back to the council, agreeing with the cities on a guideline on how to amend the countywide planning policies. Next slide. I said I was going to come back to this particular issue. This is update of the general plan or the, what is commonly known as the periodic plan update, which requires coordination with all the cities and stakeholders in Clark County to make sure that the general plan is consistent with the growth management act. The start date, if I may, is dependent upon release from the Washington State Office of Financial Management. I don't know when that population forecast is going to be released. But we are, when I say we, counties planning on the GMA are required to use and rely on the State Office of Financial Management population growth forecast. I'm anticipating that that forecast may come out in, in November of 2022. That's what I'm hearing. If it comes out later or sooner, I will come to the council and in coordination with the cities, see when the county will ask us to start that work. Next slide. These are two deferred projects and the council may say, why is this still deferred? I think you know some of the reasons. At one point, the county wanted to look at county agricultural economic assessment. I believe that Lindsay, if she's listening and studied that with an RFP, but then for some reason that never moved forward. The second one is the freight rail dependent use overlay. We have done phase one and phase two is what is on hold because of the litigation issues, which I'm not going to get into. But at any time that the council wants us to reopen that work, that will be at the discretion of the council and staff is ready to complete that work. So that's all I have on the land use, community planning. If you have questions, I will take it. If not, I will turn it over to Rob Klug. And after Rob Klug, we can come back to any of these that the council may have questions for me. So, Rob, if the council don't have questions for community planning, take it, take it away.
Other questions, Counselor, prior to moving on?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Bowman.
My question may relate very well to both parts, but as, as I'm sure you are aware, Oliver, the council has passed a designation of priority on the beginning of planning processes for a third corridor. And since that will involve transportation and land use of the topics that you've addressed here, I'd like to see that reflected in your work plan with appropriate first steps that could be undertaken in order to bring this to reality. And just to give an example of those first steps, it might be, and I'm just saying this, you know better than I what the first steps would be. But to review and study those prior studies that were made that had definitive recommendations and mapping on placement of a third or fourth corridor. And then along with that, to begin the dialogue with our city partners and, and regional partners in the area that would clearly have a stake in the discussions that go forward. So that would be a question as to, is that something that you see could be incorporated here?
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Bowman. My quick response would be yes. And the council in the seven page document that I provided as part of this discussion, the council upon review can add, as I said in the beginning, can add projects that the council would like us to work on. And I think that's where it will be, it will fall in.
So if, if I may, this is Rob Klug. I, I understand the question and what I would recommend if the council wishes to add this to the docket items for transportation and also for community planning, that a very clear portion of the work in the 2022 year is to work to get a scope of work to include anticipated levels of cost for what could very well be a multi-year project along with funding sources where the money would come out to pay for either consulting firm or additional employees to be able to take on this task. Because to be brutally honest, we are completely full with the work that we have. And so this is going to take resources that we do not currently have, or it will take, or require that we put other things off that are also very critical to what we do.
Thank you, Rob.
Madam Chair. So thank you. Karen beat me to the punch. This is exactly the topic I wanted to focus on. You know, the, the first couple of slides of your presentation listed transportation as, as a major bullet. And then we only saw it mentioned once again under the six year transportation plan. And we did, contrary to what's been stated during some of these other sessions, we are looking not to have other people do all the work. We are looking for everyone to do the work necessary to move this vision forward. We're 20 years behind. I just, I want to highlight what I think is important here. I, I just talked to Matt Ranson from the RTC, because the RTC has all the local stakeholders. And I want to hit the high points of what came out of that conversation because I think it's relevant to what Karen just brought up. We need to do something. We need to get going. We need to play our role. We're located just north of the greater Portland metropolitan area. It has unfortunate and fortunate consequences, but so geographically we are here. Now, should a federal entity decide that this is a strategic corridor, because it always saw it as such from Canada to Mexico? And I don't know what agency that is, whether it's the Federal Highway Administration, Transit Administration, Maritime Administration, or National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. You know, maybe the federal government thinks there should be a real bypass and, and it should bypass Clark County entirely as part of that strategic corridor. But the point here and what came out of the conversation with Matt Ranson is their work of plan actually has a portion that describes other corridor of work. But there's never been the work given to them. They've never had the direction from any sponsoring agency. That's what they're looking for. And I don't know if it's a federal agency. I certainly don't think it's Clark County, but we have a role here. There's federal infrastructure money available for the planning that, and Rob's mentioned, you know, we, we've discussed this before. It's going to take an enormous amount of work and play. It's gonna take an enormous amount of work and planning, but I think we need to do more than just envision. We need to locate and in relationship to our comp plan, where a corridor could and should be in relationship to where our population densities will be planned for. Additionally, we have terrain. You know, there's a tyranny in terrain. We're not gonna put a six lane bridge over by the Avenue of the Gods, because the terrain of the Cascades would dump all the traffic on fourteen and eighty-four, and and that's not really feasible. But where are the, you know, where are the possibilities for rights of way? Where would the terrain allow? Including critical terrain, you know, that terrain that's protected. You know, we, so we need to figure out how to get this moving to do our part as a county because of our geography. And so, yeah, we need to add it to our work project. And if we can get federal money out of the infrastructure plan, we need to design the project, the scope of it. How many, do we need a consultant, or can we just hire additional engineers to figure out where this additional corridor or corridors could be? But we need to do the next step. So, Oliver, I'm asking for your, how do we get it into your work plan in a reasonable scope that doesn't detract from what all the other work you're doing? And what will it cost? And where do we get the money from? Because it may be available right now as a window of opportunity to get the planning money to the county.
Counselors, I thank you. I agree with with Rob that I think the first step would be if if council asks this to our work program, it will be both community planning and transportation. But we have, the first step would be, as Rob indicated, would be a scope of work and budgeting. And that's that's really the resource. But the scope of work and who will be the lead agency? Why Clark County may be geographically well situated and the need is there. Clark County may not be the lead. Is it R T C? Is it washed out? Because this may be state route eventually. So that question needs to be answered. Who is the lead agency? And we may be participating as a party of interest in that. So the first step will be to put this on our work program, and then we can have a separate work session with council to kick it off. And but all those things will have, all those issues will have to be addressed before we even kick it off. Who is the lead agency? And so forth. So if the council decides to add it on our work program, that will be, again, part of the first step, but more work needs to be done, more thinking. And in terms of lead agency and what role would the county be playing? All those issues needs to be addressed. Now.
Good summary. And so you have my vote to put it on your work plan.
Sure, you will be making that decision, Councilor. Sorry to interrupt. You'll be making that decision at a council time. But if I, if I may, let, I didn't stop. I only mentioned the capital facilities financial plan that there are four areas of interest that needs to be updated. That is not the transportation planning program for twenty twenty-two. That is yet to come. So I will turn it over to Rob if councillors don't have any more questions from me. So, Rob, go ahead.
So i- if I may, can I recap what I think I heard and then offer a request to see if it's acceptable? The council is going to consider adding an additional item, which is starting to plan for the process of how do we get to additional corridors across the Columbia River? And what I, what I think I asked for was that the first element would be scoping to understand what the needs are as an agency for us to be able to fulfill that need with staffing and budget. And what I was hoping to be able to get to is that we could have the enough work done so that when we get to having conversations with the twenty twenty-three budget, we can be very clear about where the money's gonna come from or where we're proposing the money to come from, and any additional staffing needs, et cetera, that we had agreed to could be considered in the twenty twenty-three budget. Is that acceptable?
Madam Chair, I think the one the one point that was missed, and I think it's an important one. You know, I personally think this is a federal issue, because I don't think we're gonna get Washington and Oregon to ever get on the same page. And this is a strategic national issue. I think the part that's missing is we who is the relevant federal sponsoring agency that could task the R T C or provide help to Clark County and Oregon, for that matter? You know, I, we need to find out who who those players are. I know we have a regional representative up in Olympia. I'm waiting on the R T C to put me in contact with them. You know, that we have a national-wide movement to rebuild infrastructure. This fits right into it. So we need to find that partner, that federal partner that can really take take that lead or be be the sponsoring agency for the R T C. I I agree. This is way beyond us, but we need to do our part.
Thank you, Councilor Medgee. And, Rob, actually, to your comments, I would say, you know, it's the responsibility should lie with transportation and planning to be able to take this on. The elected officials of this county have have passed a resolution to start looking at this. And while you mentioned budget, and we all know how slim our budget is, perhaps you can be tasked with with helping us to find where this could be funded. And if Councilor Medgee is correct that we could maybe actually be able to get some federal funds for this kind of work, our transportation department should be looking into that and helping us do that.
I definitely agree. Yeah, I definitely agree.
Okay, thank you. I think go with your next report, Rob.
Okay. Actually, I'd like to hand it over to Matt, to Matt Herman, to start with our slides, and I'll be happy to answer any questions as they come along. Matt, would you please?
Sure, thank you. So good morning. My name is Matt Herman, a transportation planner with Public Works. We have a couple of slides here regarding transportation specifically. First and foremost is our ongoing programs that we administer, as well as the commissions and committees that we're responsible for. As you know, with every comprehensive plan amendment, either through an annual review or docket process, there's a transportation analysis that goes along with it. So we continually provide that transportation analysis to annual reviews as they move forward. The arterial atlas is our long-range circulation plan. We amend this periodically. Certainly, in the past, it's happened every year, but we took a brief hiatus in twenty twenty and did not make, or excuse me, twenty twenty-one and did not make any amendments. There is the potential that we could have a request from private development to amend the arterial atlas. Those requests come in, but they are processed as a docket rather than an annual review process. So that's a potential that might come in twenty twenty-two. We also administer the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. This is an ongoing committee that meets monthly and makes recommendations on either projects or policies as they relate to pedestrian and bicycle modes of transportation. We, in the past, have amended our capital facilities plan. This is our twenty-year look for supporting infrastructure with growth and population projections, as well as employment projections. Whenever the twenty-year capital facilities plan is amended, it has a cascading effect or domino effect that also includes our traffic impact fee program or T I F program. So when one amendment is made to either the C F P or the T I F program, a subsequent amendment is made to the other program as they're dependent on one another. I know, looking in the capital facilities plan in the future, there is an urban arterial intersection that we have listed that we would like to remove that from the twenty-year plan as it's not necessary. Additionally, there is an R C W, and it's specifically R C W seventy-eight dot forty-five dot oh seven oh. And it talks about the distribution of funds for infrastructure and capital development projects, specifically with greenhouse gas emissions. The state law, the R C W specifically says that when distributing capital funds through competitive programs for infrastructure and economic development projects, all state agencies must consider whether the entity, meaning Clark County, receiving the fund, has adopted policies to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So we currently do not have a greenhouse gas emissions policy, and it has impacted some of the grants that we are applying for. So we would like to consider a new greenhouse gas policy for implementation and capturing the necessary grants for those projects. Next slides.
Chair, can I just ask Matt a question about that? You know, what are the grants that we've lost? And what what would the policy have to state in order to be competitive for those grants?
So with the policy, we'd have to look into that. That's, we just want, right now, we're asking you to have us consider what the policy looks like. We don't have a policy drafted right now. And the specific grants that we have missed, it's it's on a point system, so even a one point can make a big difference whether we receive a grant or not. Susan Wilson with programming would be the best one to tell you what ones we specifically missed. I don't know if, Rob, if you have any indication on that?
I don't have that offhand, but I'm also very concerned from a compliance standpoint. If we are audited on the issue and we have no policy, but we have stated in the grant applications that we meet all the state laws, we could have a concern that we need to, we could have to repay grants. So it's it's making sure that we are as bulletproof as possible in any state, federal audit. And some of these projects can be audited by four different agencies. So it's it's a matter of making sure that we are hitting the right marks and meeting all the legal requirements. And I I don't know that this is, I haven't read into this that this is going to be a huge onerous thing for the county. It's just one of the things that we have to have in our consideration as to how we interact with the the legal requirements in our comprehensive plan.
And councillor, in any policy that's created, you know, you create policies, we implement them. So it would be an iterative process that includes your your thoughts. Okay, the next slide, the capital facilities financial plan. Oliver talked about this previously. I just wanna clarify some things. It's very confusing to the public. It's sometimes even confusing to me. Capital facilities financial plan is completely separate than the capital facilities plan. So I wanna make that entirely clear. The capital facilities financial plan is our assets, meaning Clark County's assets, rather than just the specific either transportation or parks twenty-year look. So the capital facilities financial plan is the conglomeration of our, all of our assets and all of our capital facilities plans needed to serve future growth in our existing population. The developer agreements, as you know, we now have a formal process for development agreements as they're proposed from private sector. They go through the channel, and if there are any, we do administer those and make sure that they go through that formal process as necessary. As Oliver mentioned previously, the freight rail-dependent use overlay has a big transportation component. As a result of it, it's currently on hold. Neighborhood circulation plans are necessary for implementation. We currently have two, the Westphalida Circulation Plan, as well as the, I believe it's, it's not the Sifton, near the Saint John's neighborhood that needs to be implemented. We're also looking at development of a neighborhood traffic management program. As you know, a lot of our finances go for new development and supporting our growth. And we'd like to study ways at which we can help either calm traffic or divert traffic through neighborhood streets that really affect the residents' quality of life. We used to have a neighborhood traffic management program back in the early two thousands, early aughts. That has gone away, and we'd like to look at implementing a new traffic management program. In order to do so, we'd like to have a thorough analysis on what an effective and efficient program looks like. So we'd like to study ways at which that would would look in order to move forward. And we also do support to other public works divisions. That includes our project management division that helps facilitate the actual construction projects, as well as our engineering and design divisions. Next slide. So in the one seventy-ninth street corridor, as you know, there's several roundabouts that are planned. Unfortunately, Clark County does not have its own specific standards when it relates to roundabouts, and we'd like to implement those. Currently, we default to the Washington State Design Standards, and those are specifically built for implementing state routes. So we'd like to find and develop new standards that are absolutely specific to local roads, regional arterials, and our residents in mind rather than moving state traffic. We'll also be coordinating with the Washstop Planning Office in here in Vancouver. They're going to move forward with S R five oh three corridor that connects obviously Battleground to the Vancouver Urban Growth Area. We'd like to make sure that that's coordinated with us as several of our roads, including one nineteenth relies on S R five oh three. The one seventy-ninth street circulation and access management plan. As you know, one seventy-ninth street in the Vancouver Urban Growth Area is a roller coaster. And in order to bring it up to standard, it's gonna be necessary that there's cuts where there's hills and fills where there's valleys. And that has a big impact on whether the lots can access that street. But we'd like to move forward with adoption of a circulation access management plan. So it not only preserves the safety and mobility along the corridor, but also preserves the investment that we're putting into that corridor as well. Traffic impact fee program. This goes along with the capital facilities plan update. We'll also be assisting the programming team with the development of the six-year transportation improvement Uh, we'll also be assisting uh the programming team with the development of the six-year transportation improvement program. And uh adopting or proposing new transportation standards um as uh necessary. Excellent. So the big thing that we've been talking about for the past uh three years is the transportation system plan. Transportation system plan um intent is really to bridge the gap between. The comprehensive plan policies and the implementation of projects. Uh, we've, over the past year, we've worked very heavily with um our uh. Sounding board, our sounding board is composed of several members of existing commissions and committees um in Clark County. And they've provided a wealth of feedback to us uh that really puts the plan. In the resident's perspective rather than the technical uh engineering perspective. Um, so we'll be moving forward with uh the final uh TSP draft um. And move it forward with the planning commission and uh ultimately your adoption. Um, in between planning commission and now will be a a large public outreach effort. Um, but this is a a lengthy document. And in the uh next coming months, you'll see updates coming it, coming from us to you. That details uh the work so that it's more digestible when it comes um in for adoption. So um. Yeah, um, I think that's it. Are there any questions?
Other questions in the act?
Thank you. Matt, um, on the roundabouts, I know we um kind of have been talking about a roundabout planning plan for a a year or two. Um, where where are we in that process? I don't know if we probably got delayed because of COVID and et cetera, but are we kind of toward the end in the middle or are we, where are we there?
Yeah, uh, Rob, Rob, can you uh answer that question, please?
So what we're doing is we have a series of roundabouts, uh, we have the first one that was put in at uh behind Fred Meyer on Tenth Avenue at. Oh, I wanna say one hundred and thirty-sixth Street. And a funny story, I was the signals uh engineer at that time and I was the proponent as the signals engineer to put a roundabout in there. And uh, we have another roundabout going in as a developer roundabout immediately north of Tenth Avenue to uh to for the Skyview Station Development. Uh, north on Tenth Avenue of one thirty-ninth Street, we have a roundabout corridor that's out to bid right now on Ninety-Ninth Street, which will add. Uh, multi or single lane roundabouts at Ninety-Ninth and Ninety-Fourth, uh, Ninety-Fourth Avenue, Ninety-Ninth Street and one oh seventh. Uh, Avenue and Ninety-Ninth Street at one tenth Avenue. And we have several others that are in the planning stage, uh, including on one seventy-ninth, Warden Davis, uh, and and others. So what we're finding is as we are trying to figure out how to apply the Washdot standards to our needs, they don't quite line up. So one of the things we have going on is we have a consultant going out and uh working on. Uh, to actually putting together uh our roundabout standards uh at a very high high level. Um, we have, as part of the one seventy-ninth street project, we are looking at alternate roadway cross-sections. And uh seeing how they could be developed into standard sections. Um, so it's it's kind of, we're we're utilizing a capital project to help us figure out how we're going to, what's gonna work. For the pedestrian bicycle uh vehicular needs on those corridors. Um, and we are hoping to get to the point real soon that we can start developing locations where we are. Um, identifying corridors where roundabouts would be the the preferred intersection type. That will be identified on the arterial atlas and then that's gonna require that we come back and have discussions about what the county code says about right-of-way dedication at the intersections. For developments, et cetera, to make sure that we're not going to. Build, uh, allow development to build and then have to buy two houses that have been occupied to build the roundabout. So we're we're in process and I I know I've kind of shotgunned a lot of information, um. We we're we're trying to figure out how to move from what we have to where we want to be. And there's just a lot of elements that go into it.
I'll also add, and sorry to interject, but I'll also add that the. Roundabout corridor involves more than just standards too, uh, includes the arterial atlas. As you know, if there's a rural road and we want to upgrade it, we upgrade it based on the arterial atlas. Um, classification, so in order to identify those potential roundabout locations, it's necessary so that we. Receive the adequate uh right-of-way dedication because roundabouts take up more space.
Well, and i- if I may, Matt, uh, the other thing to consider is that if we can reduce the corridor along between the roundabouts. And we could reduce the right-of-way needs by five to six feet along the entire corridor, but take a little more land at the intersections. It may be that from a developer's perspective, it's actually better for them because they have more usable land.
Okay, so we're still a ways away from actually having our own quote-unquote standards that we're following as we move forward, we're a year or more away still or?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right, thanks.
But but some of the things we're doing, like the access management uh analysis that's being done on one seventy-ninth is being performed. With the lens of, we're going to look at how we can implement that directly and and help develop those standards.
Other questions of Matt? Not, is that the presentation, I I at least for transportation, I believe Oliver said he was gonna come around and. Tie up the knot, is that correct?
I I believe so, thank you, councillor.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, councillors, I think um with the two uh discussion uh this morning, we will be looking for. Um, approval of our work program and I mentioned the uh seven-page document. Uh, the council will review that and hopefully approve that at your council time. Uh, I've been informed that you cannot approve anything during work sessions, so I'm looking at. Uh, you uh sometime in the future at a council time here to determine to. Review the seven-page document and then uh feel free to add, feel free to delete anything. Um, and then uh we're looking for your approval, that's really the ultimate goal, one area, if I may, councillors, that I did not mention, but I've come to mind is. We are beginning to monitor um the um. BRT uh walk on Mill Plan. And why do I bring that up? Um, Hesudel or no Highway ninety-nine is my understanding will be the next one. So um, when that happens with the completion of uh. The BRT uh Boston Rapid Transit on Mill Plan, as you know, Fort Plin was the first one. Highway ninety-nine would have been the third, the second one, I don't know what happened, but we are monitoring that and. Um, as soon as Hesudel or Highway ninety-nine is um. On dead, on the table, we would like to uh in consultation and in cooperation with uh C-tran um. And uh transportation folks, we will get a hard look at the Highway ninety-nine. That concludes my remarks, councillors.
Okay. Thank you, thank you all for um this work session, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And to that seven-page document. And and.
Yeah, we presented it, I, and the reason I bring it up is I hope the council has a copy of it.
I will say, it is posted on our website and I'll send a link to the councillors right now.
Thank you, Kathleen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close this work session uh and take a.